A lot of things on this campus project is one to get my first name to counsel. Sure, they just wanted to mention to him today, got all that information, I think, send them an email. My meeting for them is set up next week and pretty much we didn't get a chance to go through each line item on the budget. For the budget, but they're pretty well happy with it.
Okay.
Questions, did they need anybody else? And no one had any comments to bring to me that that way, so it was pretty good.
Excellent, so the we're scheduled twenty sixth for the hearings?
Uh, I guess.
Hopefully, that's yes, we are trying to confirm that.
Okay.
Did Gina just post those today?
No, last, I believe, in last night's discussion.
Right, I wanted the meetings together because we're meeting at night as well, so that would be the ideal meeting to have it.
Yep, alright, so the hearing together the twice.
So we'll do the hearing together on the twenty sixth?
Yeah, the hearing typically only takes fifteen minutes to read through the budget, so.
We'll probably have one the issue.
Okay, great, love that.
Um, actually, okay, so that's good, so. Um, alright, well with that, I'll take a motion.
I think you should say the amount in the motion. I, so we know what the bottom line is, right?
Can you give, can you read that number?
Sure, it's two million, twenty-two million, two hundred, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-three.
No sense.
Twenty-two million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, five fifty-three, no sense. Some day I will round these, right?
I move to approve the FY twenty-three budget at twenty-two million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars.
I'll step down a second. Uh, discussion. Uh, all those in favor?
Real eye.
Ten year.
Hey, we almost did.
So it's static, huh? See everybody here with that part on the, at the.
Yeah, we hear it.
Yeah, great.
Alright, thanks so much, Mike, um, so we have the police station building demolition project, uh, number five. We have, uh, looks like the top three, how many bids did we get?
Three bids.
Okay.
Three, uh, solid background, actually, we've done all companies without issue. Um, all three of the bidders met the requirements, um, the only issue was about the D C A M certification, but was a local requirement and it's only required for jobs over one fifty and so not required in this particular instance and so the three bids amount were forty-five thousand dollars from Vesquazi Brothers, forty-seven, three from Regional Industrial Services and then fifty-seven, three fifty from, or just wrecking and excavating, so it's really at the, the board's pleasure to select which vendor they'd like to move forward with, all three had positive references and recommendations.
I don't see why we wouldn't just pick the lowest bid unless there's something major that sticks out.
Not that I'm sure that it makes any difference, but it was, we're talking about a difference of, you know, a couple of thousand dollars.
You want to keep it?
Is that what you're saying?
Uh, that's, you know, that's in Hope Dale or we want a company out of Cranston or I'm, I mean, the other ones in Westminster, but they're way off the number.
Yeah, I mean, I, I did think of that, Lonnie, that, you know, you have a local vendor. The number is negligible. We also have to consider our, our carbon footprint with the travel from Cranston. So I think you could make a good argument to say that the Hope Dale option makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, it's not something where we have to take the lowest.
No, it's, it's your prerogative to do that.
Okay, and I mean, I think that they're all, I, is there, hold on.
Carbon footprint.
Well, I mean.
Hey, you know, that's important.
I know, but some person isn't boring, I agree with you, whatever you're saying. I mean, it's difficult because we don't, we have no state in any one, which one of them.
You think multiple of them?
Yeah, they're all have food references, the prices are all comparable, no, we have, but locally they work, so.
Yeah, we don't have any, I mean, on all the, oh. Oh, one, the Westminster guys had one reported lack of trucks for removal during COVID. How do you say that about somebody?
Nice.
Um, yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't have a, 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 and, okay. If I had to pick, I would pick the local guy, but that's just me.
I'll make a motion to award the police station building demolition project to Regional Industrial Services in the amount of forty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars.
I'll step down a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Real eye.
You. Updated town hall project?
So I just added this to the agenda because the FinCom was discussing, disgusting was discussing the, uh, the funding last night for the project, I did create a folder that the board, both boards could access for documents related to the project. Um, for the campus and, you know, any updated schematics that we have, we did have a, a meeting on Friday with um, many of the people who are on the call right now, um, basically, the current, the current estimate for the project is about seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which, but that doesn't include a bunch of additional engineering and things that we actually need, so that's, I mean, that's the the estimate, I would guess the estimate in addition is another two hundred to two fifty when we're talking about it, so the good news is, right? The good news is that we have a lot of the funding where we've been planning for this and so, um, I know last night, like I said, the FinCom actually reviewed the financials, but I'll just review them with the boards or, you know, so people could start talking about it, so we, so seven hundred and fifty-eight, seven sixty is the number right now, I think we need about a million dollars to be safe, right? Just as a reminder that, just like with these projects, and I think that we have shown, if we don't need to expend the money in a project that we've allocated, we don't, and so it's available to transfer back if we don't need it, right? I don't want anyone to think that we are unnecessarily taking funds that somehow will disappear, they won't, so I'm gonna propose that we take about three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight fifty from free cash, which is the money that we put aside that we, if you remember, we didn't allocate at the beginning of the year, right, in order, so we could get the estimate on this project. Um, there's a hundred and nineteen thousand, fifty dollars that is available from the sale of the Inman Hill Project, which we also put aside, which has to be reallocated to another capital project, right? We have a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three oh four in the complete streets fund from the article we passed five years ago for complete streets at Town Hall Campus. We have, this is so, one text that you can underneath you, but we have about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in the police station project, but we just read a bid for about fifty thousand dollars for the demo, has to come out of that, the chief needs a fence to go around the lot in the back, so I'm estimating about thirty thousand for that because he wants to do a black metal decorative fence or something like to match the surroundings and then I'm estimating about another twenty thousand dollars potentially he needs for paving that was supposed to be done with this project. So I think that leaves us between thirteen thousand from that and third, right? I don't, it's not a ton, we were really counting on some of those numbers to come in lower, but.
Quick question on the paving though, can that paving just be incorporated?
Well, we do them at the same time, right, so whatever he was supposed to have finished up, once this was demoed, it was part of it. So then we have fixed fifty-six thousand dollars from CPA that we were gonna use for, towards the ADA improvements related to the project, so that leaves us with the deficit, I think, of about three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, okay? Um, depending on the cost that come down with it, so my recommendation on funding source is going to be stabilization for town meeting because, um, as we talked about at other meetings, so our current target, so I know I'm saying a lot of numbers, it'd be easier on the screen, but, so the long-range financial plan for the town says that we'll put five percent of the operating budget aside, right, for stabilization, right now, the current balance in that account is one point four, three million dollars, okay? The target is actually one point one three, so we've hit the target and we're slightly over it, so we've got three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in surplus over the target for stabilization, so that's the number that I'd like to bring to town meeting, which is, we have this funding available, it doesn't put us below our target, right?
And that's kind of what stabilization is for, is, is those types of problems.
Right, and I, and honestly, um, it, I'd be comfortable, it would be more comfortable if it was a little bit higher. Um, I said to the committee on Friday, and I think we're all in agreement, I think everyone's agreement, that we don't want to have to come back in another meeting asking for additional funds for this project.
The next meeting, we'd wanna be returning what we did.
Exactly, and there absolutely potentially might be opportunities to apply for other grants or other things, but we, in order to stay with the momentum of the project, we wanna allocate this money now so that we can move forward.
And, and if we don't do this, if, if we don't do this, once they knock down that police station, it's gonna be a verum waysland event.
Yeah, and so, I mean, and so that's the biggest concern I think anyone would have is that we're unnecessarily taking money and putting it aside out of stabilization that we don't need, but I think we've shown with all of these creative funding sources that we have been planning and saving, you know.
But we also, we also just put, how much did we put, uh, free cash did we put in?
We put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, so.
But in, instead of moving it to here, which we were originally going to do.
Correct.
We put it in there and said, okay, when, once we get closer, we'll come back.
I really think the number should be three fifty on the floor, but, you know, I'll know better when, and Mike, when, uh, I'll know better, once we have a better idea what these costs, I mean, we're talking a difference of twenty grand, right? So three fifty is the number I'm moving with, even though it complicates the whole, we have three seventeen arguments, but.
Well, see if we can get three hundred.
Yeah, right, we're gonna, I think we're gonna need it, and if we don't expend it, it goes back, you know, so I think that, um, so far everybody needs to be in alignment on that, so I just wanted to give you a bit of an update, like I said, there's a folder for that, we'll have documentation. Um, I know, when on the call the other day, um, Dan has a lot of historic photos of the town hall and I really think for presentation for town meeting, which painful, but we should be doing historic photos versus current photos of what the campus looks like, including the condition of the town hall, because I think people need to be reminded of.
What it looks like.
Yes, and the value of this.
Excellent question.
Yeah, um, something that I think is going to be very important for this to pass is to provide a handout, a nice, beautiful handout that describes all of these sources of funds, what the total number is that we need and the sources of the funds and information on this project and a picture of what it, the drawing looks like and what it will be, because if we're on the floor and no one has any of this information in front of them and we're just spewing out, spouting off all these numbers and where it's coming from, it's gonna confuse people and people are just gonna say, I don't think, I don't wanna do this, it doesn't, I don't understand. Because it's a lot of technical stuff and so I really just think just a one-page info document would be great.
I would, I would, if I, if I, if I could take it a step further, you know, the last couple of, uh, meetings, we've had a, a run-through. Um, the moderator's done a run-through and recorded it, it would be a really good idea to have something prepared to explain that in that, so that in record it, so that people could watch and know ahead of time, I think the, the handout that Mark talks about is essential. But if we have all those factors and all the information available on a run-through so that people can know about it ahead of time, I think it's much easier to make everybody understand um, just how vital it is to, to do this right.
Let me put the dust aside and put the map on the side.
And we do have a schematic that's in the folder right now that we could share if we wanted, it's not colorized, it's the entire plans, multiple layers. I'm saving the most recent of those documents in that folder, so you guys can access them anytime, we could show that plan right now if people were had access.
Great.
To Lonnie, but it's, it's not colored, you know, it's not a colorized version that's, you know, for town meeting, we've, uh, we've the committee and had requested Friday that we get, we know it's crucial to provide a visual aid for this project.
Yeah, do, do you agree that you think we could have something, just a one, simple one-page?
I do, I think it's kind of confusing because of all of the funding sources, that part is tricky, like, and it's multiple articles on the.
Right, but I think if we can say, and this article also refers to.
It's in the articles for the, uh, for FinCom from last night. So Finance Department. They're moving so fast, you're hurting my head.
She doesn't have, uh.
You don't have the finance committee?
No, Finance Department.
Finance Department.
Like if you had the one page and you listed three hundred and thirty-eight from free cash and then you put the article that refers to and that way, each, each of these lines of where the funds are coming from are relative to each article. It's all on one sheet, so that everyone understands that all of these money movements are for the Town Hall Campus project.
Please hold one second.
We're talking.
Doing it right now. We also have a spreadsheet with the, um, where do you want it, Town Hall Campus?
Yeah.
No, put it in the what one?
There it is, it's in the folder. It's, it's in my folder.
Takes a minute.
You do it on the.
Which folder is it in, the Town Hall Campus folder or?
It will be, it will be a second syncing up probably.
This is out, yes, I keep the speed, which is so slow.
You know.
Easy.
You probably put it in the wrong folder.
I did not, oh, it's ready. I think it's like page ten, so.
Hold on, let me share it.
I don't know, I'm just guessing what page it is, but it's, you know, it's down the trail.
So easy to read.
Yeah, well, that's the thing, it's, it's not visually appealing, it's appealing if you've been looking at it so you know what it looks like, you know, but it's not like.
I don't know, I, I honestly, from, from an engineering standpoint, I think it looks well detailed and well researched.
Yeah, so, I mean, you can see some of the big changes, you know, the exit on the other side of the library, that's only one direction, right? You can see that there's an island in the back, um, right, the flow of traffic, you can see that there's, there's right now currently is proposed an ADA walkway that curves in order to meet the grade and that.
What nightmare.
Anyway, it, so, I mean, we have detailed plans and we are going to have, you know, mockups basically, so.
So are we in agreement that a one-page document would be an excellent way to ensure that all of the voters have all of the information in front of them?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
See, you wanna make a motion on that?
I almost do, actually.
Yeah.
No, we can make that happen, we can, we can probably get a much better rendering. Okay, alright, yes.
So, yeah, but I mean, basically, so people know, I mean, this is an elaborate plan that's been many years in the works, a number, you know, we applied for a grant, we finally received it, this is, we pays for this portion of the design, there is a committee that's on it. I mean, we certainly look for other funding sources, but I don't want to wade to the detriment of the project, right?
Right, and I think, you know, we, yeah, I mean, there's been a lot of conversation about this for years and the community doesn't necessarily know all of those conversations in details and that's why I, I just worry that it gets confusing to folks on the floor if we don't have some guide for them to be ready to talk about these things.
I, I think it's important we make it clear that we do have a plan, that we have got it all figured out and we're not looking for the money just so that we're gonna spend it some time in, in the future and I think that document you suggest, Mark, is a great idea to let everybody know that this is the plan, this is the cost, this is where we're gonna move forward.
And that it, this plan was funded by a grant, that's another argument here, I mean.
Huge.
It'd be a waste to just not do anything because we've got grant funding to move this project forward, so.
We can't, we can't, we, look, we can't do, not, nothing, right, I mean, we gotta take that whole police station down and we've gotta fix that parking lot and and that whole campus, I mean, we're gonna do that space, um, and this plan looks terrific and there's a lot of people that put a lot of time and effort in to make this pleasing and I think that one-page document will make that clear to everybody.
Alright.
That's my update.
Awesome, what happened? Anything else on that? Uh, inspectional services coordinator, health administrator position update.
Great, so I'm just keeping you aware of what's happening, we've received, as you know, over sixty-five applications for the new position, we are, uh, we've selected fifteen of the top of the sixty-five candidates to do preliminary interviews, those will be happening tomorrow and Friday. Um, and then the finalists from those groups will be interviewed next week with the relevant department heads of that board and then my rec, my hope is that we find a candidate and backup potentially and, um, do the background checks over those next two weeks and have someone for appointment on the twenty-sixth is my hope.
Right.
Right, and so we are, you know, we have a desperate need to fill in that department and we are working as fast as we can to do it, obviously, and so I, I think we have a lot of promising candidates in this group with, um, with, uh, qualifications from, you know, the, the qualifications position were high school degree and three to five years of administrative experience, but we have candidates in this group with master's degrees, you know, and twenty-five years of office manager experience and so we have a lot of really qualified candidates, just finding the right fit for the organization, so we really gotta, I, I need to physically, you know, meet with them all and interview them to get a sense, right? So it's an unusual, unusual situation, so very pleased to be moving forward with that quickly.
Great, any questions guys?
Good there, thank you.
Mike, you got anything? It's our ease.
I think he stepped away for a second. No, oh, I, I was listening, I just, but, but no, I don't have a question, I just, I think it's amazing that you have highly experienced people with a master's degree, um, applying for this position when, you know, I think, you know, we had a, we had a CPA apply for that, uh, accountant's position a few years ago, right, so I guess there's a lot of, there's a lot of attractiveness to getting into, um, you know, the public sector, I guess.
Right, certainly as a second career, right?
Right, that's what.
A lot of post pandemic or don't wanna step back into the hours they were doing before, I see a lot of that advocate tool, they want something with, you know, more stability, set hours closer to home.
Yep.
Alright, next item, uh, discuss select board members attending other board committee meetings, so I know we, you know, where there's a lot of committees that we do join, uh, by default that we have to have a, a member on them from the, uh, from the board, but in in some discussions I've had recently with some folks around, uh, you know, one or two people, there's a, there seems to be a concern whether there's any levity behind it or not, that maybe things aren't on the up and up and, and in, on certain boards or committees and I think that if we're going to be getting those kind of, that kind of information or that, that sentiment is out there that we as members of these, uh, as members of the select board, especially on the committees that are appointed by us, should be aware if there's any issues, so I, I don't know how we go about doing it, maybe it gets, maybe it gets a little bit easier when we have, uh, two more members. Um, but something I just wanted to put on the radar to discuss, uh, to either you know, squash any misinformation that's out there or if something is being done wrong, that we can get in front of it to correct it uh, or make adjustments as we see needed, um, I don't know personally that there's anything going on, but if that's the sentiment, I think we should, we should fix it. Or at least try to assist and fix it.
I would also just like to add, Cindy and I talked about this two years ago, basically, where through no fault of their own, oftentimes, boards don't know the process that they're supposed to be following, right? They've just been doing what they've known for many years and so she and I had talked about doing sort of a tour of boards and reminding them of their scope and what their responsibilities are within the town or for the town as an appointed board of the selectmen or as an elected board and I would just add it on the side, since I've obviously worked in other communities with boards that have more than three members. I often see where each member of the select board takes a committee or two every year of what they're interested in and they go to those committees and then they basically report back if there's anything to report and it's, it's really just about keeping communication flow, right? Rather than having to have someone commit or the chair of every committee every week, if something relevant is happening that the board should all know about, we just have a running section on our agenda that talks about boards and committee updates and then if you have something, you share it, right? And, I mean, uh, Lonnie and I also talked about, I think collectively between the four of us, we're already attending so many meetings about so many different things that we really just need a mechanism for reporting all of that back together at the same time. So I'm happy to assist however you wanna set this up.
Thanks.
I think that some really good points have been made here and I also think the people in the community, if they have actual legitimate concern about something, they need to put it in writing and send it to the board as opposed to just talking about it and not really addressing it, I mean, you know, I've heard this for years, even before I was on the board about all these stories and these potential corruption and all of this, but you gotta go and be a part of the solution and that means you have to get up in front of the select board or whoever and talk about what's so concerning. That's my opinion, I mean, it needs to be more, more direct communication from members of the public that are concerned as opposed to just talking about it.
Yeah, I, I, I think frankly, the more that we record, make things available for people to get access to remotely and the more information they get to see exactly what really goes on and what's really discussed, it really squelches any suggestion that something underhanded is going on or things are being discussed that aren't being documented, you know? So I think recording everything and making it available, these YouTube videos that have been, have been, uh, you know, published from all of the meetings, um, solves it and I think the more me, the more that committees embrace that, um, the more boards embrace that, I think the more that that will go to the side.
Well, luckily, we have all of our boards and committees, um, doing that, other than the Board of Assessors unfortunately are choosing not to partake in that really important public access option, so, you know, it, it's a good thing that we're seeing that our boards and committees are recognizing the importance of that and that, Mike, I think you're right, I think will assist the select board and if there's a concern about a specific meeting, we can go back and look at those conversations, um, so, yeah.
It's something we could never do before, right?
So, Mark, to your point, like, um, again, we can move on to the next item, but now you talked about the, the folks coming in. Uh, apparently, you know, again, there's that, those, you know, trucks and words you just were using that are out there, it's easier just to continue to spread the rumors without evidence and facts. It's easier just to continue to spread the rumors without evidence and fact than it is to come in and discuss it. So that's why I'm kind of saying that we should go and get ahead of it to find out where, where the problem is because I don't see any evidence of it, but we can go look, right? All right.
Right.
Um. The records room land, uh, so I was, uh, working with, um, Kathy Schofield, uh, on an historical committee on the records room. We had the survey done, the survey cleaned everything up that was on our assessors' maps and now everything, all the lot lines are, are cleared up. The, the, as, it's, it is actually as was expected. Um, and it was the, the drawings that were off. Uh, so we fixed those, uh, so we, we went, met with the Lowell's the other day and they're definitely amenable to any type of ideas that we can come up with. Uh, and although, uh, during the discussion, it was brought up with, you know, do you want the whole, the house and the whole lot? So the, I think the question should be not, hadn't even thought of that, but the question maybe should be posed to the historical commission, committee to see if that, if that home is, got great historical value to the community? And would it be something that the community should look into buying? Again, not a big fan of the community being in, in, in the land business, but if there's some reason we should have it because, or it would make sense for the community, the town to open, at least it would be worth pay for that, them to have a look at it. Uh, and that was just my idea that flew from that last meeting. If you guys have any thoughts on it.
Well, are, are you saying that the, the, the drawing that showed that the, the lot line went through the building was not accurate? So, um, so we do own the building and, and a little bit of land around it?
Yes. So, um, yes. Actually, I'm not, yeah. Uh, I, I, did I send everybody a copy of it? I thought I did.
The last one I saw, Lonnie, was the one where it appeared that the lot lines went, you know, through the building.
I, I'll check, I'll, again, the, the, yes, it was cleared up, the, at least the building is in its own lot. Um, so that, and I, I'll make sure you have a copy. I apologize if I didn't send it. I, I'm almost a hundred percent positive I did, but I'll go back and check. So, yes, the lot is very small around it and there's not much to do. Uh, after today's meeting with the, regarding the septic down in, in, um, the highway department and, uh, the calculations and helping with it and getting the senior center and wells and all that all laid out with the fifty. I, we, hopefully we're in enough capacity that we can actually put a tight tank in front of the records room and drop a pipe, uh, into the, the leaching field that goes down. I mean, I can't imagine what that would add. It's, if it's a, what is it, a hundred square foot size? Um, but sorry, I kind of digressed there, Mike. The, you did, the land is small around it. Um, again, the, the Lowell's are metal, uh, are open to discussion on that, but also kind of pose the, the opinion that they might be willing, would, would might like to sell the whole thing. And I figured it was at least worth a look for the historical committee to give us a report on that, uh, if you guys feel that's the same.
So this is the, this is the house that's on the other side of the, uh, Brixton Leach Field? That first one that's next to the records room?
Yep. It's a, it's currently, uh, it's an apartment or a house.
To rent.
It's only a single family, though, I don't think it's two. Um, right. So definitely, again, I, I just thought it was worth looking at before we made a final decision on.
Always.
Yes. And we also have some time because they delayed the, because we weren't ready for the grant. So give us a little time to discuss and then really be ready for the architect to, uh, with, that we're going to get with the grant to, uh, really be able to figure something out with that property.
I, I agree. Uh, to get the information, yeah.
Okay. So Kathy, are you there? She's there.
She's muted.
That's okay.
I'm here, Lonnie.
So, yeah, so do you, um, do you, would you guys, uh, would you already know about that property? Or would you like to look a little deeper in there to see if it would be something that the, the town would be strategic for the town to purchase?
But, yeah, I mean, we, it's certainly worth looking into and, and, you know, trying to see if it's a building that we can, you know, um, get some use out of, you know, if it works for the town. So we'll do some historical research and, um, get back to everybody.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Um, all right, anything else on that? And then, okay, so then, um.
You have, I think you might have someone. CJ is talking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize, uh, I, I, I do have a question. We're talking about, as I look on a, uh, Massachusetts interactive property map, are we talking about fifteen Main Street here?
Yeah, hang on one second, I can take a peek.
Yep, it's fifteen.
Okay.
And I, and I guess I just, um, you know, from talking to, to many people and maybe even Lonnie himself about owning property that we don't have necessarily a long-term strategic purpose for. And we're in the discussion mode, which is not a bad thing, to be talking about a property that might be of value to the town. But I guess I'd want to hear as a resident, a very strong reason for purchasing the property. Um, that's all I'm saying. I mean, I, I, I do hear, uh, you know, Lonnie's, um, I don't want to say concern about, uh, you know, owning property as a town. You know, we, we, we have many properties in town that we're looking to dispose at the moment that, um, were probably purchased prematurely or for reasons that, uh, maybe didn't have long-term strategic purposes. And I'd just like to raise, uh, my concern as a resident that, you know, we do look at this, you know, in a, in a, in a, in a real methodical way. Is this really makes sense? Thank you.
Thanks, CJ. Uh, next, anybody else got anything else on that? Okay. Um, so, uh, we have the next one is to discuss the progression of viewpoint and online applications. Um, so I spoke with Dan, this was the other, the third item that I had asked to be put on. Um, I spoke to Dan about it briefly, I think, today. But we're at a point with viewpoint where it's, we can really go so much further with it. Like we had a, a great run getting it loaded in, uh, getting the forms loaded in. But then we have like a whole departments that, that we still need to add in there. And I just wanted to o- offer my assistance with helping to get that done. Um, I have some resources that could help maybe possibly get those forms in there, um, through our office. And looking at just, and, and mainly because I, I work both sides of that and with the building that we do, there's certain applications are in there, certain applications are tricked. If you are looking for the building permit right away, but that can be premature over getting the well and the septic permit ahead of that. So I think what we need to do is just fine tune, uh, the way that viewpoint works. And if, again, I, I'm just offering it up to, to work with Dan to, uh, to get that done a- as soon as we can.
Sounds good.
All right. Um. Discuss the rock and block party. I don't have anything else new, uh, to discuss on that. If anybody has any questions, I can answer them. Other topics not reasonably anticipated in forty-eight hours, do we have anything?
Nope. I'm good.
All right. Um, executive session, so I move to go into executive session.
I'll do it, you want me to do it?
I got it. Purpos to, pursuant to actual law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, eight-two. In that contract negotiations with non-union personnel, library director, contractor, purpose six, consider the purchase exchange lease of value of real property, trash property discussed in open session. They have detrimental effect on this negotiating position. Vote call vote is needed, will reconvene only to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Real I.
Or Ali I.
Anyhow. All right, thanks, everybody. Um, I don't think you guys have to hop out and learn something.